Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Covina's City Council Meeting.
Eric.
Today is February the 7th, 2023, and it is approximately 6:59. The meeting is now in session. Before we get started, I would like to make an announcement that if anyone causes a disruption here tonight, you will be given warning, a warning, and if another disruption takes place, you will be asked to leave the council chamber. This is a business meeting, and we are here to conduct the business of the people of West Covina. Tonight's invo-- so we're going to move on now. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's invocation will be held by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai will be the lead, will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Emily Fathers, we gather here this evening. We thank you for the liberties that we enjoy in America. We thank you, Father, that we can gather in this venue, Father, around the affairs of our city. We remember the words of the Psalmist of all, that unless the Lord built the house, they labor in vain who built it. So we acknowledge you, asking you for wisdom, guidance, and direction for our mayor, our city council, and all those in authority in this city. Father, we pray that you bless them and that you bless their families, Father, for they give so much, and at times they're away from their families. And we speak the protection of your angels over the families of our city council and our mayor. We pray that you bless them with it. We pray that you bless our city, city schools, Father, and that our schools stay safe havens. We pray for the blessing of God over our neighborhoods, Father. May they be free of violence, Father. And we pray for our businesses, that they prosper in every way. Father, we pray that you also give wisdom to our local school boards. Father, we thank you and we praise you for the upcoming celebration of our city, our centennial. Father, you've been good to us, and we thank you that we can celebrate 100 years, and we pray that not only you bless the days of the celebration, but all the preparation that is still going on. Father, we acknowledge you, and we thank you for the guidance of your spirit upon this meeting. God bless America, and God bless our beloved city, West Covina, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
[inaudible] By hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai.
Present.
Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Thank you. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, with regard to item number one, on a vote of five to zero, council directed staff to pay the plaintiff $55,000, and in return, plaintiff agreed to dismiss his complaint. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight, we will be having some presentations. We have a certificate of recognition congratulating Assistant Chief Jim Rudolph on 40 years of service. So if we can please, I'm sorry, if we can please call Chief Capelli and Assistant Chief Jim Rudolph, he can come down.
Testing.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, citizens. Welcome here tonight. We're here to recognize Assistant Chief Jim Woodruff, as the mayor stated, for 40 years of service with the city of West Covina. Currently, Jim is the shift commander on the B shift, so he runs all the day-to-day activities that happen on that shift. Jim got hired in January 29th, 1983, so that's over 40 years, if we're counting, which we are. So 40 years of service, active service. He's worked as a firefighter, firefighter paramedic, fire engineer, fire captain, and now, like I said, he's Assistant Chief on the B shift. So, I mean, he's held every single rank, other than Fire Chief, but maybe soon. While working with the fire department and serving the community, Jim has extensive knowledge and training with the fire department training activities and citywide disaster training. Jim has lectured for Incident Command, multi-casually. He's lectured at Queen of Valley Hospital and Continue Education, and is an expert in infectious disease, done some lectures with that, as well as lectured on tactical emergency medical services, which is like SWAT team for paramedics. He's an expert on responding to terrorism events, he's also lectured in that as well. He's been an instructor at Mount SAC, right? And like I say, he's a subject matter expert in development of the first-in guide for terror response events. So there was a guide that was put out for first responders, Jim assisted in creating that guide. Bachelor's in science, Associate in science, been recognized six different categories, the Fire Department Award. He's had the Firefighter of the Year, he has the Service Award, Distinguished Service Award, Mysterious Service Award, Organizational Excellence, and he's also been given by the Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Division as a Community Preparedness Expert. Well, I know the rest. So here tonight with Jim, which I'm sure he's going to thank, is Linda. She's allowed him to work with us for these 40 years, and his extended family likes to travel. Sure, you want to talk, right, Jim? I just want to say thank you for, for being in fire service this long and serving the community. Jim does a lot to the community. He's at a lot of the events. He's served this community well and other communities, but he is definitely a service, a public servant for the city of West Covina, and we're glad to have him all these years and continued service. I'd like to thank you, Jim. I appreciate you.
Forty years to be working for a city, that's wonderful. We want to thank you, we want to thank you for your service, and your family must be so proud of you. So I just want to thank you for doing this for us, for us, and I want to present a certificate for you. So, here's a certificate from the city of West Covina recognizing you for 40 years of active service. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
One, two, three, one more, please. One, two, and three.
Would you like to say a few words?
Please. Thank you. Thank you. When I realize that the city's celebrating 100 years this month, 40 years just doesn't seem that long. But like everybody my age say, it goes by fast, and years of service here have gone by fast. I'd like to say it's always been easy. That's not the case. I've been blessed with good health. That's not always the case for public safety. I've seen a lot of good firefighters have to leave early due to injuries. Fortunately, I've been able to stay on and work for the 40 years, and whenever I did have down days, I always counted on the team to help me out, whether it be the team of firefighters that I had a privilege to work with over all those years, or whether it's been the city team. The one thing that I've noticed in working at the city, we do a lot of projects for the city. West Covina's very active, tries to do good things for the neighborhood and the citizens and the city in general. And so I've had a great opportunity to work with a lot of different groups, whether it be different departments, whether it be the elected officials, whether it be the head staff members of the city, whether it be some of the city community groups, or service clubs, or just the individual citizens of the West Covina. I know everything that I've worked on in the past has been made better by the team here at West Covina. The team that's probably supported me most was my family. I appreciate my wife for all the time that I've been able to put in here. I love you, hon. Thank you very much for allowing me to proceed and further my career goals here at West Covina. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Hello. We have a certificate here from the Senator's Office, certificate of recognition, West Covina Fire Department, 40 years of service, from the office of Susan Rubio's Senator, 22nd District. We have a certificate here for you.
On the count of three, one, two, three. Other one, please. One, two, and three.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Linda. Linda. Linda.
Say something.
I thought you were getting a roll.
This is West Covina.
On the count of three, one, two, three. One.
Linda. Linda. Linda.
Speed, beat.
Hold on. Say something.
I thought you were getting a roll.
This is West Covina.
On the count of three, one, two, three. One.
Would you like to say a few words, Linda? Would you like to say a few words?
I want a roll.
No. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Congratulations. Yes. Okay, tonight, we'd also like to recognize Shirag Deyal, a West Covina Good Samaritan who helped unconscious California Highway Patrol officer in a multi-vehicle crash on the I-10 freeway near the Baranca Street exit in West Covina on December the 14th, 2022. Wow, I mean, this is so nice. Thank you so much, and you're a hero, and thank you for doing, excuse me? And I just, we want to just recognize you. So we have a certificate here. Certificate of recognition for Shirag Deyal, who saved this officer.
Mayor Rosario. Our CHP officer.
I'd like to ask Lieutenant, oh, I just forgot his name, so sorry. Go on, yeah, come on down from the CHP. So what happened was, there was a traffic accident on December 14th, and Mr. Deyal was at, it would happen right in front of his business, was on the other side of the freeway. If anybody knows the 10 freeway going eastbound, there's the Days Inn, the accidents on the freeway, scaled the fence, jumped the fence, jumped on the radio, called the CHP, let the haters traffic accident, CHP's involved, to get everybody and the first responders responding, and assisted the people that were hurt. And we really want to thank you for jumping in and doing that, taking the time to do that, not only jumping the fence, risking your life, getting on the freeway, which any of the firefighters, police officers here are saying, that's a very dangerous job being on the freeway, and we thank you for helping us out and being that way. And Lieutenant is very, very happy that you were able to jump on the radio and do that as well. We thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. City of West Covina Fire Department and Police Department, you guys do amazing job. People don't recognize you guys as, as they do, but you guys do a great job, even with the CHP. You know, whenever there's stuff going on on the freeway, I see it immediately. To the 22 people that did send me, what, hate mails, go ahead, you could keep sending them, but I don't really care, because I'll do it for the first responders anytime.
We have a video to play, I guess.
Officer down, officer down.
Now at four, a Good Samaritan jumps into action after a chain reaction crash leaves a CHP officer injured. Good afternoon, I'm Juan Fernandez.
Hi, everyone, I'm Susie Sa. We first brought you news of that officer hurt in a crash as breaking news here on KCAL 9 yesterday afternoon. Well, that officer is okay.
And now we're hearing from the man who called in the accident from the officer's patrol car and got help. KCAL 9's Jeff Nguyen has the story.
The officer's unconscious, or his head's down, he's bleeding.
Shirag Deyal jumped into action after this CHP patrol car was rear-ended in a chain reaction crash. The officer was working a traffic stop when he became a victim. It happened on the 10 freeway in West Covina in front of the Days Inn that Deyal owns.
Deyal and I are about the same height. In order for him to help the officer, he had to get over this wall and fence totaling about 10 feet. He tried several times, but failed. Then another Good Samaritan came by.
He put his hands together and was like, jump on my shoulder and my back, and I told him, no, I can't. And then put your hands together and, and boosted me up, and then he boosted me up.
The officer was still unconscious when Deyal got to him, so he started hitting the two buttons on the radio and said, what came to his mind?
Officer down, officer down.
After a few minutes, the officer came to.
And he told me his badge number and his name, and he was asking if I could call his wife.
They were able to use the officer's smart watch that was connected to his phone.
Conversation with the wife was very, very brief. I just said that he's okay, he's alert now, but he, he is, it was a major car accident.
Both the Sheriff's Department and the CHP were able to help get the injured officer taken to a hospital in Pomona. We've been told he suffered moderate injuries.
No one stopped, no one, even out of the three cars that were involved in the accident, no one, no one got out of their vehicle, where that's ridiculous to me.
The people in the two other cars had minor injuries. The cause is under investigation. In West Covina, Jeff Nguyen, KCAL 9 News.
Great job, great job, appreciate it.
Again, we have another presentation from the office of Susan Rubio's office, the Senator, run the 22nd District, and this is given to Shirag Deyal for his, his heroic efforts in, in taking care of this officer. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor Rosario.
On behalf of the California Highway Patrol and Officer Miller and his family, we want to thank you for what you did on that day, when your voice come over the radio. We know when it's not one of our own, we knew something was wrong, and we thank you. Officer Miller wanted to be here today. Unfortunately, he is, he's not doing well, but he is alive, and we don't know his prognosis yet, but we want to thank you, and he wants to meet you himself, and, and he has something for you. So in the near future, we hope that you will visit us, and we will present you with something else. Thank you for your help.
Okay, now we're going to move on to oral communications. submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. How many do we have?
I have eight speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Irma Cooper, followed by Armando Herman, followed by Jim Grivitch.
To the council, the mayor, staff, and to members in the audience. My name is Irma Cooper. I am the president of the San Gabriel Valley NAACP. I want to address the council about freedom of speech versus hate speech. Freedom of speech is a fundamental right of all Americans, including the citizens of West Covina. We agree the freedom of speech. Freedom of speech supports other fundamental rights, such as to a peaceful assembly, to participate in public affairs, freedom of religion, and I don't think it's necessary for me to go through a whole list, but the behavior that happened at the January 17th, 2023, city council meeting is not in isolation. It has been allowed to continue since 2020. The West Covina leadership states its freedom of speech, and they do not want to be sued. Is that leadership or the easy way out, as no one will stand up against this rationale? So over for two years, the citizens of West Covina has been held hostage by two citizens who do not have a vested interest in the city of West Covina. The incident happened the day after the city of West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley NAACP celebrated Martin Luther King Day. Based on what I saw in the video on January 17th, and the displaying of the Confederate flag, I believe it's hate speech, not freedom of speech. Therefore, it is a violation of the California Penal Code, Section 422.6 and 51.7. Our goal is to prevent harm and ensure equality, so everyone has the equal right to participate in public meetings. This means without threat, threats, intimidation, offensive racial language, no demeaning people based on their race, and name-calling. Recommendations for the West Covina Council? The city attorney needs to review the California Penal Code on hate crimes and how to handle disruptions to a public meeting without violating freedom of speech or the Brown Act. The city manager and the city attorney need to meet with their counterparts in the city of Los Angeles to obtain information and best practices on how to handle excessive racial disruption in a city meeting. The mayor and the city council need to make a statement that they do not support racial disruption and behavior that's been going on for over two years in this city council meeting, and put a stop to it. Also, to apologize to the citizens of West Covina and denounce this type of divisive behavior that is not productive for the citizens of West Covina. And the council may want to consider changing the order of their public comments. We love our city of West Covina. We want to continue our 24-year relationship with the city, but we will not support disruption of the city council meeting with hate speech and the displaying of the Confederate flag. West Covina is celebrating its 100th anniversary and has been designated as one of the most safest cities in the United States. Let's not let hate tarnish our city. Let's continue to have the city of West Covina be the beloved community that Martin Luther King envisioned in his dream. Speaking as the representative of the NAACP, and as a personal citizen, and as a veteran of 30 years, who have served in a combat area and led troops in Iraq, I am totally offended to see that treason flag hanging and representing in this city council. And I know other veterans feel the same way. 30 years representing the United States flag, not a treason flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Armando Herman, followed by Jim Grivitch, followed by Jerry Patress.
Sounds like a bunch of squirmishness going on around here, but let's face it, the arena, when it comes to the Constitution and the First Amendment, will be sharp, it will be robust, and it will definitely shock those of you pitiful, weak, unpleasant government on, on aiding to the language of the political arena, which is abusive. Now, this lady here speaking about a flag, well, it's symbolic. Any flag is symbolic. Any gesture can be symbolic. Now, whether my interpretation is presented by the First Amendment, this might be my First Amendment, a constitutional right to present to you that the United States versus Baghdadi Zarian lets this country be fucked for another four years. A black person done--
Yes. Sometimes it's caused worse, real, for rape, and cause an action for reaction.
Address the council.
I am addressing the council. The council is behind me, the people that elected you, Mayor, and so, again, Annenberg vs. Ohio, US 395, 1969, I'm not the one. But let's put it in these words, and there's nothing in violation here. How far is the nigger going? Yeah, this is what we're going to do to the niggers, the dirty nigger.
All right. So, watch your language. Watch your language.
Davis, our state whites, and freedom for the whites. Nigger will have to fight her every hand she gets from now on. So Brendan Burke vs. Ohio and all these other gestures of First Amendment, you seem to be offended. What Snyder vs. Phelps talks about, when a religious group simply goes out at a cemetery and it reads on their placards, and I'll read it to the record, 562 US 443, decision of the Supreme Court of the United States. God hates the USA, thank God for 9/11. America is due, don't pray for the USA. Thank God for IEDs, fat troops, simplify fags, God hates fags. Maryland Taliban, fags doom nations, not blessed, just cursed. Thank God for dead soldiers, open hell, priest rate boys, you're going to hell, God hates you. There is nothing offensive about this. These are decisions in which I'm gonna turn into this council as a public record, like I've been doing for the last two years, because again, threats, what you find as a threat is nothing but utterance of facts and truths. Now, this is how the United States Supreme Court rules on decisions and actions made by faulty, lack of supervision of local government. Not that Ms. Mayor is any better than any of us, I mean, her boyfriend, her husband came in here threatening for Mr. Pro Tem, Brian. for Mr. Pro Temp, Ryan. There was no action taken, but that was a serious threat against a councilman from his seat. And I simply just read the verbiage that I go to a public library, at a law library downtown, and pull out the information for you, mayor. So that your constituents can understand that constitutional rights, California constitutional rights, are protected free speech. And if there's a threat, now, we talked about in LA today about a 50 caliber. Well, if you read Baghdadi Zarian versus United States, the gentleman Baghdadi Zarian from Pasadena versus United States of Pasadena simply put it in very good words. He said he would shoot the blank with a 50 caliber. Now, you can rule that as offensive and threatening. We rule that as a protected First Amendment free speech. You will acknowledge that, mayor, and keep your goddamn police chief from putting hands on people and kicking us out of the door.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I bless America.
Yes.
I'm also gonna talk about freedom of speech, and I hope you don't hold the last speech against me. The... Last week, several residents addressed the council about item number three on your agenda, regulations on contributions to political campaigns. And I'm happy to see that the city has chosen to listen to the residents and revise the ordinance. However, I feel the ordinance as written now is still incomplete, but only incomplete by precisely one word. I'm asking the council to amend the ordinance as presented to you to add one word, the word candidates, to the ordinance, specifically communications by persons. It should read, "No person shall make and no candidate or candidates committee..." I'm adding the word candidates committee, "shall receive from any person any contribution in support or opposition to any candidate for elective city office in excess of $650." The ordinance as presented to you is ambiguous and vague, can be interpreted in more than one way, and in my opinion, is unconstitutional and a violation of state law. It's better than it was last time because some of the language has been corrected. But there's still the one issue. And I want to stress that the state was very specific when they wanted to limit campaign contributions to candidates. And the reason why they were was because of corruption. If candidates could receive large contributions, they would be subject to corruption.
Excuse me. Herman, stop disrupting the meeting. This is your warning, your first and only warning. Go ahead. Sorry.
If a candidate would receive a large contribution from an individual, they'd be subject to what's called quid pro quo. I gave you a lot of money. You have to vote the way I want. The Supreme Court, in several cases, has ruled that that is okay to limit contributions to candidates. What the Supreme Court has also ruled in several cases, and also appellate courts, is you cannot limit contributions by general-purpose committees or what is otherwise called independent committees. And that is the issue here. And that's why I have added the word candidates committee to this language, so that it's very clear that that is the only committee that's restricted by the 650. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Patress, followed by David Schwartz, followed by Peter G.
Good evening. Jerry Patress, West Covina resident. Tonight, I'm gonna comment on Agenda Item 3, Campaign Finance Regulation, Ordinance 2513. Chris Elsado, a popular television show host, who refers to himself as the liberty-loving Latino, often speaks on the First Amendment. He recently commented, "Those who deny free speech are never the good guy." He is correct. The staff report for Agenda Item 3 claims you are correcting a staff error on the version of the ordinance attached to the staff report when Ordinance 2510 was adopted. That is incorrect. Supreme Court cases on the constitutionality of Ordinance 2510 were brought to the city's attention by a law firm. That's what caused the change in Ordinance 2510 and created Ordinance 2513, not an administrative error. An additional correction is needed. In Ordinance 2513, the word candidates needs to be inserted in the front of the word committee. There is a difference between a candidate-controlled committee and an independent political action committee. Without that change, we have reason to believe that Ordinance 2513 is unconstitutional too. Candidates, once in office, become elected officials, subject to influence peddling, bribery, collusion, and other forms of corruption. Within that framework, the government has a legitimate interest to impose limits on candidate-controlled committees, just as California recently did. Independent political action committees, those committees that are not controlled by candidates, are entirely different. These PACs support or oppose candidates or measures, and the courts have upheld their right to do so. No matter how offended and angry you may be about mailers sent against you during the November 2022 city council election, you do not have the constitutional right to limit contributions to independent political action committees. Be a good guy. For clarity, insert the word candidates in front of the word committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Schwartz, followed by Peter G., followed by George Ogden.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen and women. Mine's gonna be very short. First, I want to thank you for last month, when I talked about the street sweeping. They finally showed up this last week. So I'm hoping it's because of you guys. My second item is also, has to refer to the street maintenance in two areas. One, it's about two or three years ago, the city came and cut down three trees, city trees, on 1216 and 1226 East Service Avenue. They promised that they were gonna replant the trees because the ones they took out, they felt were dangerous. And they were supposed to replace it, and to this day, they still haven't done that. I spoke with the neighbors, and basically, the neighbor at 1226 still wants his tree replanted. And they've contacted street maintenance several times to try to get the tree resolved, and they just haven't acted. So if you guys could be kind enough to maybe, you know, bug their ear or something for that. And in the same sense too, on that same corner, on the southeast corner of Service and Pima, which is the address of 1226 East Service, about, I would say about eight months ago, there was, when we had the windstorms, it knocked down the stop sign and the street signs. And we contacted street maintenance. They never showed up. And myself and some of the neighbors, we called. And finally, like six weeks later, they came and picked up, or someone picked up the sign, and it was gone. And then about a month later, the stop sign was replaced, but they never put the street signs on it. So I ask that if you could please contact Mike or whoever over at Street Maintenance to put the street signs back on. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Peter G., followed by George Ogden, followed by John Shoemaker.
Good evening, councilmen, pro temp, mayor. First Amendment. I'm not a lawyer, but I understand respect. I respect the woman who served our country. I respect the First Amendment. I find, how do you say, rudeness when we say the Pledge of Allegiance and people sit down and leave their hat on. I was taught, being a citizen of this city, almost seven decades, my family's been here. So, in fact, my father knows you many years ago. Where the council didn't look like it looks now. So out of respect and all this stuff, First Amendment, First Amendment, granted, a lot of stuff we don't want to hear, a lot of stuff irritates people. But you know what? That's part of the United States' conflict of being who we are. But I actually am just here for the beautification of West Covina. Over the last couple of years or decades, I've noticed you've had people putting their garages into apartment buildings. People that are leaving their bushes, shrubs, and trash out in the street. That does beautify. At one time, West Covina actually fined a man, a lawyer, a man of the law, an officer of the court because his grass wasn't green, wasn't mowed. So if you want to help people learn to respect, let's restart like what he's talking about. Make the city beautiful. This is what the city council should be working about. Bringing somebody in from Los Angeles? Absolutely not. That's why people don't live in L.A., they live in West Covina. L.A. can do what they want. They have a great influence. But as far as bringing some lawyer from L.A. to West Covina? Thank you, but no thank you. That's my time, and I thank you for your service. And may man may be disrupting, but that's the Constitution. And unfortunately, I raised my hand for the service of that Constitution. So I may not like it, but I have to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Ogden, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Colleen Rizzotti.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff. Okay, my name is George Ogden. I'm the Assistant Inspector General for the State of California and also the commander for the VFW. I want to thank Colonel Irma Cooper, the president of the NAACP and NAACP, and the rest of the people that showed up for her support. Did I get that right? NAACP? Oh, CP, okay. I don't even know if I got VFW right, okay? Anyway, sorry about that, Irma. I'm gonna hear about this one. But the reason I'm here is because of the hate speech that went on at that last city council meeting and the racist flag that was displayed blocking this thoroughway here. I have, there's a picture in the newspaper of it. I came down, and I'm showing it only that in my hand. And so, we've gotten a number of emails on this. And talk about hate mail. This guy's not doing well. Anyway, that flag was held up by Greenstein and Armando Herman, who is sitting behind us. When he came up to speak, the first two words out of his mouth, and there's a young child here, was GD. And then he loudly yelled out the N-word. And as he approached the mic here, and then he went on. And in the past, he's called female elected officials the C-word. I held this least for being one of them. Another example is Honorable Tony Woo. He's mayor, council member, has done well. He calls them Woo Woo. And there's all kinds of other comments that's going on. Our city council meeting is actually a business meeting. It is not a public speaking forum, okay? That's not this platform. The council meeting is for the residents of the West Covina and the operatives of West Covina. In other words, business people. I don't believe that Herman is a resident here in West Covina. He uses fallen vulgar language. It's extremely offensive and threatening at times. He has made vocal gestures. Well, it happened a few seconds ago. And he's also made gestures towards one of our staff members when she was bending over, talking to a clerk. He was gyrating his hips in a seat. He has also, at one time, attempted to injure a speaker that was up here. Two people came up, and there was a gentleman standing behind the speaker. He removed a shoe, and he kept taking it towards this individual. I believe I've given some of you that information at one time, with the pictures in it. The police chief came down and removed that shoe. We don't need that kind of activity here. And so Herman has a history that includes violence, including a 243 PC felony assault charge, in which originally the bail was set at $50,000. Only, I'm holding up the documents from the Sheriff's Department. Excuse me. You can probably get this online now. He probably has it framed at his house, I don't know. Also, his co-partner thinks it's pretty cool to walk up here with a jacket with a penis drawn on the back of his jacket, so everybody can see it. Now, as a veteran, I didn't appreciate the disrespect that Greenstein and Herman did during the Pledge of Allegiance. He may as well piss on the graves of those very veterans that protected our First Amendment rights. Okay? So this is a business meeting, not a public forum. These two have compromised their meetings to the point where some people won't even come to them anymore. That's not fair. We have a program, it's called Patriarch Pen. And what ends up happening is we have kids come to the city council meeting and sit through it. I can't do that because of the liability with Mr. Herman using the vulgar and horrible language. So take a look at how they do their oral communications in the city of Azusa. They only allow their residents to speak. And at the very end, if there's any time left, they will have another allowable period to have somebody communicate to that city council that are not residents. Thank you for your time, and I wish us all a lot of luck.
Thank you.
John Shoemaker, followed by Colleen Rizzotti, followed by Steve Bennett.
What's going on?
Unfortunately, people have fallen into the trap of what these guys want, which is, basically, the last half hour has been giving them attention instead of it just ignoring them. They go away. When Councilwoman Betty Lopez Viado was mayor, she did a good job handling them. She just ignored them. And they kind of shut up and didn't do a whole lot. Then we had Mayor Dario, who reacted, and it started them all over again instead of just ignoring it. I find it kind of strange how our mayor is offended at the language or hate speech when her very own husband has gotten up here on numerous occasions, has called Mexican immigrants cockroaches, excuse me, dreamers, cockroaches. You know, he'll say DACA as caca. The mayor herself has stated that "I'm a Latina female," or Hispanic female, "but I don't think like them." How does a Hispanic think? She doesn't think like them. Now, those of you in the audience, just take... Now, those of you in the audience, just take the word Hispanic out, put your race or nationality in it, and if somebody says, "I don't think like them," would you be offended? I think you would be. I think you would be. So I hope that what goes on is that all of it is condemned. A comment from the city council or the mayor saying what, you know, these two, I don't know what you want to call them, condemning it but letting her own speech and that of her husband go by is fake and phony. Is fake and phony. I don't like what they say. I think it's despicable. But then the mayor's own husband has said a whole lot of things on Facebook and at this very stand. He's threatened people. He gave the city attorney, I believe it was, a note one time, basically saying, "If you ever shut me up again." He's asking for a CCW, concealed carry weapon, but he's made remarks that resulted in extra police officers being brought into this chamber about, "Well, when you come to the meeting tonight, don't bring a knife to a gunfight." And we all know he has a license to carry a gun in his job as a security guard. So, you know, let's go about, you know, if we're going to handle it, handle it all and make sure that it all stops. Best thing is quit giving these guys attention. I hate what they say. I despise what they say. But unfortunately, there's not a whole lot we can do. It is unfortunate. When some of it was going on, two very nice ladies who left, and I said, "Don't give in to them." They said, "We just can't take it." I can understand. I can understand. You know, but, you know, giving them the attention does it. But then we have an example sitting on the city council and a member of our own family. So it's kind of hollow and shallow for anything to be done unless it's done completely. So I don't like, like I said, I don't like or enjoy what they say at all. I wish there is something we can do. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, we can't. Or we have to take a different approach to do it. One of the things about it is you can never legislate common sense and decency. And that's what it comes down to. No common sense and no decency on their part. Nothing is out of bounds, and it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Colleen Rizzotti, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. Colleen Rizzotti, City Treasurer and President of West Covina Beautiful. I'm here tonight to give a little public service announcement to let everyone know that West Covina will be celebrating the city's birthday as we have in the past, I don't know, five or six decades. And we're also celebrating our 75th Diamond Jubilee, which means that we have been around for 75 years. Established in 1948, we're the oldest nonprofit here in the city, and we're going to be recognizing that as well as the 100th birthday of the city. And by the way, we think that it's fabulous that there's a lot of centennial celebrations. We hope that there's a centennial pumpkin carving contest and a centennial 5K run, et cetera. We should really embrace this. I personally have lived here all my life, and I'm excited to be a part of this monumental history moment. So the event begins at 4 o'clock. For those of you that haven't ever taken a tour of Hurst Ranch, that's where the event is located this year. There'll be a guided tour along with live music and a taste of West Covina. From 6 to 8, we have casino night and dinner. From 8 to 9 are the Beautification Awards that we do every year, and we recognize an outstanding business that has beautified the city to enhance our lives, along with a resident who has embraced and has embellished or re-landscaped his property, along with our Impact Projects Volunteer of the Year and Community Partner and the Home for the Holiday Winter for 2022. From 9 to 11, there will be more casino, dancing, cigars, and maybe a little cognac. I'm not sure, possibly. Sounds good. So we hope you all come out and join us. Tickets are available. You can go on West Covina Beautiful's Facebook and leave us a message, and we'll get in touch with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Steve Bennett, followed by R. Robinson.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council staff. I always love coming to council meetings. You learn so much. And I am ecstatic to see the NAACP here in force to defend and support the residents of the city of West Covina. So I want to thank them for their attendance. The only thing that would be better is if they had enough people to come and fill every seat before Armando Herman showed up, because then he wouldn't have a seat in here, and that would be entertaining at best. The reason why I'm here is, while I'm happy they're here, the reason why I'm here is to talk about the campaign finance. And on January 17th, we saw that get passed. There were questions on this council to its validity, and I think we're seeing some of that come to fruition, that it wasn't as valid as maybe the city attorney explained that it was. Maybe there wasn't enough research done to determine. Maybe there wasn't enough proofreading, because apparently a mistake happened on the document, even though it was approved to form. So in reading the changes, and I'm sure he'll tell us that it's a minor change, I ask you guys to reconsider and revert the ordinance back to the original ordinance. I don't care about the 650, because, let's face it, cost of living, probably if it was adjusted this year, would be at 650 anyways if we had the old ordinance still in place. But I don't support the idea of restricting political action committees from independent expenditures or general purpose committees having a limit. I don't support that. It's not solving a problem that some of you have tried to address. Tony, you yourself have addressed it, saying you're trying to prevent people from doing that. Well, the State of California has already passed a legislative measure that, as a council member, you can't accept over $251 without recusing yourself from any action from that business or person. So if you accept that, over $250, you can't do that. So the state has already put into place a way to prevent you guys from having any corruption, or at least, we hope. So there's already things in place that are far better out there to take this into account. Putting a limit of $650 on a general purpose committee or expenditure committee isn't something that addressed. And the state could have addressed that when they addressed the rest of it, but they chose not to. Jim Grivitch gave a great explanation as to why. And at the last meeting, he spoke very eloquently about those reasons. But again, we pushed that through. So I stand here tonight. You can take Jim's recommendation by the wording. I think you're only making a bad measure slightly better. It's not really correcting it. But I would like to see the removal of all instances of anything other than a candidate-controlled committee having a limit of 650. And that's where I stand on that. And again, to the NAACP, I hope you're here every week for this, and I will continue to address you, unfortunately, like the other person doesn't. I hope they're here every week, and I look forward to seeing them. Have a great night, guys.
Good evening. I'm definitely not the brightest light in West Covina. And I don't really know. I have to consult a legal dictionary to find out the difference between speech and hate speech. I mean, I do know words matter, because what I wanted to talk to you tonight, I've been complaining about it for three months, AB 2098, how it affects medical doctors. And the city manager mentioned he was going to check, check. Last time I, I've been, I brought up this several times, and he said he'd check on it. Well, it's not necessary, because I have an update on that subject. It's kind of good news. A Sacramento federal district judge, his name is Shub, S-H-U-B-B, blocks doctor censorship law in California. Apparently, two weeks ago, there is a preliminary injunction granted to the motion to block the governor and the attorney general and the California Medical Board from enforcing that COVID misinformation law. Words matter, and some people's misinformation is other people's censorship. And the judge pointed out that it's a Fourth Amendment vagueness challenge. Jim Grivitch was just mentioning unconstitutional vagueness with regard to ordinance that you're considering. Well, unconstitutional vagueness matters in the context of the Fourteenth Amendment. And this decision that I'm trying to explain, the judge found that the plaintiffs have established a likelihood of success on the grounds of their Fourteenth Amendment vagueness challenge. And Judge Shub's memorandum and order states drawing a line between what is true and what is settled by scientific consensus.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
If not impossible.
Sergeant at arms. Can you remove Mr. Herman, please?
Stop the, well, what's, are you going to stop the clock? I'm losing my time.
He's distracting.
He's not distracting.
No, you're okay. You're okay. Hold on. You're okay. Hold on.
Your time has been stopped, sir.
Okay. Well, anyway, drawing a line, I'm talking about vagueness and a settled, the Assemblyman and the committee that drew up this law, he has a political science degree, and they conduct polls and find out consensus and stuff like that. Science doesn't work that way. If there's one person that collects the data and provides proof, you don't, you don't, you could conduct a poll and decide that, you know, if this, if this.
Continue.
If I trip, I might fall down, and a poll doesn't matter. It's the law of gravity. And scientific laws and science doesn't work on a consensus basis, as the judge pointed out. Well, the order's criticism of the new law is remarkable in the sense that because the term "scientific consensus" is so ill-defined, physician plaintiffs are unable to determine if their intended conduct contradicts the scientific consensus. And accordingly, what is prohibited by the law, the consensus changes monthly based on the COVID timeline, and therefore, the meaning of the law changes continuously. And how do you work with a law that's always changing? You know, it's sand on the beach. Vague statutes are particularly objectionable when they involve sensitive areas of First Amendment freedoms. You can ignore what Jim Grivitch has to say, and maybe the city will lose a similar Fourteenth Amendment vagueness challenge, or words matter. And people attract attention with words, and I think the courts have ruled that you can, if you want, you could burn the American flag. Well, some people are really offended by that, but courts have said, you know, the First Amendment is the First Amendment. And why pledge to the flag every council meeting if you don't understand or respect the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I guess I'm done, but.
Yes, thank you.
Don't I, you interrupted me, and I have a couple more.
I stopped the clock.
Oh, you stopped, he stopped the clock. Thank you.
See you next time. Well, anyway, the judge brought us good news two weeks ago, and I just wanted to.
Thank you. I have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
How you doing? Yeah, I couldn't help seeing you smile when Steve and a few other people clapped to have that man evicted. I didn't really hear him disrupting much. Maybe he has his camera up. I see the NAACP in here complaining about the Confederate flag. Well, that Confederate flag swung outside the mansion in Arkansas for a certain governor that they backed up for many years named Bill Clinton. And I didn't hear him complaining about that. But this knucklehead, who's as vulgar as could be, comes in here, and he can't exercise his right. I believe he was ex-military as well. Is the First Amendment only according to what you believe, what you like, what some of these folks in here like? Or does it apply equally to all that may have a different opinion? That person that came up earlier and said, "You know, I'm a lawyer. I don't like what he says," but fact is, he has a right. He does have a right. He wasn't any more disruptive here tonight than I've seen your husband, myself, and so many others here tonight be. So it's shame on you guys that you all ganged up on this man just because you don't like his words. You should have asked Steve and anyone else that was clapping when you had him evicted, had the police come down here and escort him out. You should have had Steve be quiet or thrown him out, but you didn't. You smiled. You celebrated that moment. Shame on you, Mayor.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, we'll continue on with our meeting. Okay. Okay, city manager report. I mean, I'm sorry. Can you please respond?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. I'll try to briefly respond to the comments that we received tonight. We had seven speakers tonight talk about freedom of speech. Like to say that in these chambers, we affirm the dignity and the worth of all of our community members. As regarding conduct at these meetings, people get five minutes to say what they will. What they're not allowed to do is to disrupt these meetings. The governor signed some legislation this week that further clarified those rights under the Brown Act for residents that come. During their five minutes, they can say whatever they choose to say. They can use words that are there. We're not endorsing them, but we're allowing them or defending their right of free speech. They can say things that are vulgar and profane and sexist and racist and homophobic and ignorant, and we'll allow it here during their five minutes. We won't allow our meetings to be disrupted. We had an individual shown the door last meeting, making goat noises. We had an individual shown the door tonight when the mayor identified that he was disrupting the meeting, and that'll be our business practice. Two of our speakers talked about Agenda Item Number Three, which establishes the way in which the campaign limits of $650 are defined. Before I get to the substance of that, I want to say, one of the suggestions I've heard about this free speech issue is that we should move public comments to the end of the meeting. One of the reasons we have it up front is we're really honoring those that take of their time to come, seek to address their grievances, and to speak to agenda items before the council acts on them. So we had tonight both Jim Grivitch and Jerry Potrus. Thank you both for coming. Talk about Number Three, suggesting some amendments to the wording of that ordinance. Before you act on it, I would encourage you to think about their request. It makes sense. I'm generally not in favor of amending ordinances on the fly, but if you want to recognize that we might need some more work on that one, suggest you refer it back, but that comes later in your meeting. Mr. Schwartz came and identified some service requests about some street trees that need to be replaced, and I'll see to it. We get him some trees and also a missing street sign. I'll see to it that I take care of that as well. Yes, sir. Our city treasurer identified a number of West Covina Beautiful events, including a centennial dinner event. I thank her for coming. And I think that's. And I think that's all I heard this evening, thank you very much. I'm available for questions, should you have any?
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, there was also in reference to Peter G. regarding the beautification and code enforcement. I just wanted to let you know that code enforcement has always been our top priority. We actually have a good code enforcement and actually, a few months ago, I was even hit that they, we got complaints that they're overdoing it, but we do have an app that we can put in, so if you do notice any neighbors or anything, you can just go ahead and report that in. And we actually have our code enforcement manager up there, Mylan, he's right there raising his hand. You're more than welcome to speak to him during the meeting, he'll wait for you there. If you have additional questions in reference to code enforcement, but we do our best to try to keep our city beautiful, clean, safe, and I just wanted to make sure you're aware that we do have an app to put, to report any code enforcement issues. And I guess that's about it. And I know you mentioned lawyer from L.A., I don't know what that. Oh, okay, you are not a lawyer from L.A., okay. Yeah, I'm like, our lawyers are not from L.A. either. Okay. I just wanted, but in reference to just code enforcement, you're more than welcome to speak to Mylan up there. Thank you.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, okay? And why, six weeks, and our staff didn't pick up the sign, so maybe we should look into it? And supposedly, we have the West Covina app, so if they call the city or they put the app, so the thing should happen timely matter. So can we find out, okay, why is the issue, so this thing won't happen again? And second thing, I think his talk about street signs hasn't been put it back, so maybe we can have our traffic engineer to, okay, schedule time to put the sign, I don't know this is from public work or from our traffic engineer, so I think we need a sign back, okay, and hopefully this thing happens. We always have a stone or some issue happen, so this thing happens. So our accident, they hit the stop sign and the stop sign like laying there for a long time, so maybe we can, maybe act a little bit faster and can you find a way to make this thing, okay, and find out why people call and our city staff didn't react, okay? Or please use the West Covina app, okay, to report any of the issue, okay? If they didn't react, then let us know and we try to correct it and try to improve it. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'll respond to those issues, I'll look into them and correct them. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually wanted to speak on what was said tonight. The language that was used used to be law, right? I was thinking, we're 100th anniversary, for those first 40 years, that language was used by HOAs, racial covenants, real estate lobbies to keep us from West Covina. Worked by the NAACP, people like Thurgood Marshall, right, fought to have those things removed and there's still a lot of work. I think one of the reasons why I wanted to be on a council was to see I could affect law, right? I mean, I've understood words and I've understood the interpersonal that happened today, but I've been concerned about how our racial history impacts what streets get paved, what school funding looks like, how we approach affordable housing. And those have been kind of the things that have been heavy on me. I understand the language, the language is painful, I, you know, I look out there and, you know, I wish there was more that I could do or I could say from here, but just as a representative of West Covina, that sentiment is not what the city is about. It is a sentiment that we are trying to make sure, does not influence our policies, does not influence our decision-making. We want to make sure that even those things that sometimes we say are colorblind, we make sure that that history isn't continuing the damage of the past. And so, thank you for being here tonight. We hear you. It is front of mind and, you know, we've talked for two years about what can be done about this chamber to make it a safe space for everybody. And you're heard and you'll continue to be heard and I just want to thank you and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tabatabai.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Cantos.
Just wanted to remark briefly about the use of hate speech by reading from Supreme Court opinions. I'll address some thoughts later at the right time in the agenda, but if those words are intended to incite hate, well, they're utilized as hate speech as a form of promoting violence or other type of agitation, then I feel that it could be considered fighting words, which should be considered. I realize that there's a further analysis that's needed, but the mere reading of the words can't be taken in a vacuum, it needs to be looked at in context as to why they're used within the context of the broader remarks. And so I just wanted to put that in for the record and to add my appreciation to President Cooper from the NAACP for her words today and really appreciative to the San Gabriel Valley NAACP and all its members and all those watching for being supportive of the type of environment that embraces the kind of conduct that can bring us together as opposed to tearing us apart.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Leti Lopez-Viado.
So, thank you. And I know what Councilman Tabatabai said about understanding, but understanding and action are two different things. It is frustrated, frustrating for us. I mean, obviously, you know, we had, we didn't let this go, very beginning, we were like, just, no. We went to our city attorney, there's articles about Herman, if you've read it, like with City of L.A., City of Downey, he's waiting for that push, almost like a tactic when he has his five-minute right of speech, to get ejected during the speech so that he can sue. And it has happened with other cities and surprisingly, he has won. With the City of L.A., he did the same thing and, you know, well, when that happened, I know he had a pocket knife, so it didn't, it was just, it broke even on that one. Other cities as well. So the right of five-minute speech is that, on our end, we do have the right, I know, as one of them mentioned, when I was a former mayor, I had the right to turn off the mic so that the people watching on YouTube or live, they do not get to hear the foul language because his right is to speak to the council. That's why I know our current mayor says, speak to the current council, doesn't have the right to do anything else. Now, on that note, I know we've looked into our city attorney, we worked with our city attorney, what can we possibly do, what, the avenues, what are there? So I bring it back to you as a resident, and one, I greatly appreciate when people come up and they speak on the offset of things. So I know he speaks the hate, but we did appreciate, like with the last pastor, speak about the love to offset, so we do thank you for being here today. But if there's anything that, you know, we can do or that you know of that we did not see or catch, by all means, let us know. If it's something that you need to, the residents need to go up to the legislative and go up there, by all means, do so, but of course, we'd like to see some action, but we just wanted to let you know that here, the council does not tolerate that, we don't appreciate that. It's disgusting. I mean, it's filthy, disgusting, just on many terms and levels. So I just wanted to let you know that West Covina, I mean, that's not the city we like to live in and we just want to, we appreciate your support and if there's anything that we can do as well to make it right or any possible ways that, other avenues, by all means, let us know or take it high above there. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. With that, I just want to say that we do not condone this kind of behavior. It really aggravates us, it makes us frustrated, but as I mentioned before, we've, many people have mentioned that, which our hands are tied and, but we're going to try to, any disruptions in the audience, he will be removed, anyone will be removed that is disruptive in the audience. I just want to, I want to thank the president from the NAACP, NAACP. And I just want to say that your words were very powerful and I've heard, I heard them all and they were very touching and I just, I'm sorry that you have to go through this, you know, but we, we're trying every avenue we can, we can, to try to avoid this and we just have those five minutes that we have to deal with. But we're going to continue to see what we can do about this and that's what we can do so far. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to, oh, Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mayor, I just have a very brief report tonight before we get to your Agendized Business. First, I wanted to make mention of the fact that West Covina was in the news this week for being ranked as the number three safest city in the country for cities with population over 100,000. They use some metrics based on cost of crime and I was really proud of our police department and our community efforts. Got a video clip to share.
Cities in the U.S., when you look at cities with a population of more than 100,000, one of the top three is right here in Southern California.
Fox 11's Hal Eisner, live in West Covina. They got to be feeling pretty good about being included, huh, Hal?
Yeah, you know, it's a pretty exciting time here in West Covina. It's their 100th anniversary as a city and then they get this notation in Forbes Magazine that they are the third safest city in the United States for cities with a population of just over 100,000. You've lived in West Covina your whole life?
My whole life.
You really love this place?
I love West Covina.
Why?
It's really safe.
No matter who we talked with, the answers were always the same. What do you like about West Covina?
Um, it just feels generally safe.
You feel pretty good around here?
Yeah.
You ever worry about crime?
No.
No.
Absolutely not.
I'm not surprised that West Covina comes out so high on the list.
Ken Plonkett is a captain with the West Covina Police Department. What's been their policing strategy?
Well, the police department, we use a service area policing model and our officers are proactive and we're hopefully responsive to the needs of the community.
To some, it's the schools and the shopping centers they love.
It has good schools for raising children, it has a great senior center.
This is your 100th year as a city?
It is our 100th anniversary, yes.
Assistant City Manager Roxanne Lermes says, "West Covina started off as an agricultural community a century ago."
Orange groves and walnut groves and it turned into a bedroom community.
And when surveys like this are released, more people tend to move into an area because it's perceived to be safe. West Covina has seen a population growth since the 2020 census. The city is not without crime, it has its share, just like any other city, but it's considered the third safest city in the nation because as Melody Kasulis with Money Geek puts it, "It has less more serious crime than serious ones."
West Covina was number three on our analysis for safest cities. And the reason being is that West Covina's violent crime rate is vastly below what the national average is.
Kasulis says the national average for violent crimes is just over 500 violent crimes per 100,000 residents.
And West Covina is around like 49, so that's very, very low.
Another inland empire city ranking high on the list is Rancho Cucamonga. That's why Norma Gutierrez Basalto loves her town. You love Rancho?
I love Rancho Cucamonga.
You love it?
Yeah, I love it.
I mean, you love it more than anything?
I do, I love it.
I think she loves it. Here's another piece of information from the West Covina Police Department. Last year, they had four murders in this community. This year, so far, none. Alex Marla, back to you.
There's an article on the Forbes Magazine that has the full details on the whole breakdown of everything.
Next item to report, the city was recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association for some excellence in its budget presentation. We received a distinguished budget presentation award. It's really a shining moment for us and all credit to our really fine finance department, our director and assistant director for some really great work.
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Moore, GFW's executive director. It is my honor to recognize you for receiving the distinguished budget presentation award. The purpose of this award program is to encourage and assist governments to repair comprehensive and understandable budget documents that we believe will both improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the distinguished budget presentation award, you met demanding program criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization's leaders and finance team. We hope that this award will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to you this distinguished budget presentation award. Congratulations.
Wanted to mention in response to an inquiry about our internship programs, we're currently practicing continuous enrollment for internship opportunities across all of our city departments. Councilman Wu first made the request to put together an internship program a few years ago and all departments have had the opportunity to request interns through the HR. Primarily, our volunteer interns are using this opportunity to get hours for college credits. What we're finding right now in this labor market is that we might have to transition to a paid model, but I'll ask you to consider that when we get to the budget considerations. Next slide, please. We had a request for some update about the Sportsplex and its renovations. The ball fields at the West Covina Sportsplex are currently in a rest and renovation period. Been up there three or four times in the last two weeks. While the ball fields are closed for reservations, the soccer pavilion is still being utilized for soccer and is available for leagues and classes. The renovations that are underway right now consist of sprinkler repairs, seating, repairs to the facade and repainting, laser leveling of the fields and repairs to the restaurants. We anticipate the Sportsplex will be reopening and in use next month in March. Next slide. Wanted to make mention of a community meeting happening in these chambers this Thursday, February the 9th at 6:00 P.M. We wanted to focus on complying with the state law SB 1383, which is the law which will trigger that we treat in different ways our organics. I think the thinking is that those will be placed into the green waste bins and then separated at the MRF. The purpose of this state law is to help prevent the creation of methane at landfills. The community is going to be facing some options and we want to share a couple of those with the community this Thursday, again, 6:00 P.M. If you're interested, I hope you would take the time to come out. As part of our ongoing budget process, we still have up our budget survey and we also have up a survey now online, which is going to contribute to the city of West Covina's health assessment. The budget survey will be available until February 23rd and both surveys can be found on the city's website. Wanted to mention a couple of community events. Thursday, February 16th, we're going to have our centennial celebration and dinner at the Sportsplex starting at 6:00 P.M. Tickets are $50 per person, a table of 10 is $450. There's some sponsorship opportunities available and all proceeds will benefit the West Covina Community Services Foundation. And lastly, I wanted to mention of the fact that we've got other events planned for the 100th anniversary. We've got some music lined up for the festival, which is February 17th, Friday through Sunday the 19th, take place on South Glendora Avenue. We're hoping people will join us for carnival, for food, for vendors, for entertainment and for family fun. That's all I have this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leti Lopez-Viado.
So I just wanted to say, no, it's the 100th anniversary and a lot of good things are happening and I just wanted to cherish this. I just remembered in 2018, when I ran, the city was going down towards bankruptcy and I was even told, you're foolish for running. And I was even told, "You're foolish for running because you can't do anything to improve the city." Well, obviously, here we are, four years later, with a big improvement, especially with the budget, finance, safety, and just a variety of different factors. So that is a top-down leadership. So it is by the council. And a special thanks to our city manager, Dave Carmini, for leading the city. So I just wanted to thank you so much for the hard work that you and your staff and everybody in, in the city of West Covina has done to get to this level. So I greatly appreciate that. I know, I, I shared that, the safety video. And of course, there's always those negative naysayers and, you know, there's always, there's no 100% safe city. I mean, you tell me that with 100,000 population. I run programming, sports and everything. The bigger the program you are, you have, the problems you're going to have. I mean, it's default with that many people that we have. But overall, people don't understand that with the safety, that is through the leadership of the council, voting some things. When, there was that time of defunding police. So, like, we had a protest on Baranca Bridge for BLM and defund police. And the most ironic part is, I think I was mayor or mayor pro tem back then, they sent me an email stating, "We're going to do BLM protests and defund police. Make sure you send your police officers to barricade our protesters." I was thinking, "Are you kidding me?" I mean, but I didn't want to argue back with the email because I just wanted that one protest and just leave our city. Go ahead, do your thing. But I made sure, we told our city, "We are not going to tolerate any rioting. We're not going to tolerate any of that." And we were, we were proactive. We barricaded, made sure the entrance, or if anything should have happened, we were on it. Unfortunately, the businesses at the Eastland Plaza lost business that day because they had to barricade their windows. So that was one. We had, we improved our code enforcement and police and fire, improvement on that. And that made a difference because, you know, if you see graffiti, broken windows, all that, if you leave that, you know, that broken window theory occurs. You know, we've had the catalytic converter etching. Some people said, "Well, that's stupid. They're going to still steal it." But guess what? When they recovered, it's so much easier to give it back and you, you retain, you get to have that portion that you lost. You know, I know we had the intense training with PD for active shooter. The biggest factor was also the implementation of the block camera. That actually, any murders or any incident was quickly resolved. So people outside are aware of these things that are happening. And police being proactive and everything is a major factor also why some people are like, "Okay, skip this city because you're, you have eyes and ears." So I, one, I just want to say thank you. And I know that was the biggest thing for me, public safety and, you know, keeping safe, beautiful and everything. So, you know, promises were kept, but I just want to say, obviously, I can't do it on my own. I have, you know, the assistance with the council and the staff and everybody. So I do thank, again, the city manager, the department heads, and everybody leaving, everybody doing their part in each department because that makes us one. So thank you again, and it's just wonderful news to see all this. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kontos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, just a few quick questions regarding the Sportsplex. I realize we don't have an exact date for March, but just to be clear, when you say that we're going to be open, that means open during the day? So that way, people, people will be able to make full use of the, of the facilities? I just wanted to be clear on that, just.
Through the chair, if I may, Mayor, I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager Lermes to answer that question directly, please.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager Carmini. Councilman Kontos, to answer your question, yes, it would be open during the day. There will be specified hours because there are operating hours for the facility. Areas that would be open, you know, you have your batting cages, making those available for the public to use. The ball fields are rental spaces. You know, there are classes that do take place in areas such as the soccer pavilion. But yeah, they, once, once we do reopen it, we will make spaces available for reservation and then, of course, the batting cages for public, for public use.
Thank you, Madam Assistant, Assistant City Manager. And so when that, when that happens, then that will mean that, that people who just decided to do a pickup game, they could just go to someone on staff who will be there during operating hours?
There will be someone during operating hours. They can go through, go to someone on staff. They will have to sign a waiver, just like with any of our recreation classes or programs that come in, that anyone participates in. But there needs to be a definition of what is, okay, a regular pickup game, you know, a few people, you know, coming into, coming and participating as opposed to like an organized league. There needs to be a distinction between the two. And we, our goal really is to address that through a park use policy, which does not currently exist.
So by the time the Sportsplex opens, there will be a park use policy? And then there will be broad-based communications to let everyone know the parameters as well as the, how people can make use of the, of the facilities?
Well, the park use policy will have to come to council first for approval. How the timing will coincide, you know, first, we'll open the space, we'll take reservations, we'll also allow people to come in, to fill out waivers and to utilize the spaces. But there will be a distinction made once that park policy is approved as to what constitutes a league or organized play versus what constitutes individuals coming, you know, your, your neighborhood family coming in and wanting to enjoy the premises. So that will come. And once that policy is approved, it will be enforced.
And so in the process of developing that, will there be an opportunity for the public to give its views so that way they can hear, we can hear a community perspective so as that policy is put together?
We can. That's, that's absolutely part of what makes for good public engagement. But just recognize that there are approval processes that have to take place, just as a form of best practice. It's prudent to have your community and senior services commission to take a look at your policy. It's also a good idea to have your, your sports council take a look at the policy before, just again, for feedback before it's vetted. Both of those, of course, would be public meetings. If you're looking for a separate engagement opportunity for members of the public, that's certainly up to the council's discretion and we can move that direction if that's what the council chooses.
So it's possible then for, for members of the public to go to the commission meeting when that is, when that is agendized?
Correct.
And then express themselves there?
Correct.
And also for, through the sports council, people may express their views there as well?
There is a public comment opportunity during the commission meetings. All of our commission meetings are open to the public. There's opportunities for public to participate in sports council meetings anyway, in addition to the community services commission meetings.
Magnificent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And Mr. City Manager, the other question is on a different matter with regard to the Athens event this Thursday. Will the, will the folks who will be with you at that meeting this Thursday at 6:00 also be willing to answer general resident questions that they have about Athens? I've already emailed them to, to let Athens know that, that residents do have questions on a number, number of matters. So can you please relay word to Athens that they need to be prepared to answer resident questions beyond the stated topic of, of that day's, that evening's meeting, please?
And through the chair, we would welcome that. They're going to have their top executive in attendance and, and I'm sure we would be open to all of those comments and questions.
Thank you. No more further questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, number three, please.
Councilman, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two.
Anyone else? With the exception of three and two, do we have a move to, to approve? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion made by Councilmember Kontos and a second by Councilwoman Lopez-Viado to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number two, consideration of 2023 city council goals. And item number three, consideration of an ordinance amending section 2-402 of Article 8 of Chapter 2 of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to campaign finance regulations. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Items pass 5-0.
Councilman, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so I just had, I was here at the, the town hall that we had regarding the goals. It was really well attended. I think one of the best attended we've had since we've come back from COVID. A lot of great interactions. So there, there were a few items on our, on our goals that I just wanted to, to touch on and, and maybe to, to put some, some focus so we can have some action this year. So on, on goal one, protect public safety. One action that I'd like to see where it says monitor, manage, and as appropriate, reduce fire department overtime expenditures. I, I know that's, that's something that we've, we've discussed forever. I, I'd like to see that we get a presentation from our fire chief on, on how he's going to approach to do that. I, I know we've, we talk about it all the time, but it would be, I think it's necessary that the community sees what model we're going to be using to go ahead and reduce the overtime expenditures. On, on the other item, it was, it was, it was a big talking point at the town hall. In terms of the public health department, we're now more than two years in. And, and on the bullet, it says, "With due regard to general fund fiscal impacts." And so if by the end of the year, we could have a financial analysis of what, what it would look like to have a fully functional health department. I understand that there's a piecemeal approach that we were, we were hoping that the state would approve. But I, I think it's necessary that we get a full picture if we were to have to run the entire health department. I know the city of San Dimas did it. And so going on year three, I, I think we should be able to do it. The other one on this item is on the police department body worn cameras. I, I know that there's best practices on the policies on, on how to, to use those and also what, what can become public and, and not. And so if we could get a presentation from the, the chief or the captains on the, the policy for the body worn cameras and how our PD will use it and in terms of, you know, what, what becomes public, what gets held back, things like that. So that was for item one. Item three, for address homeless issues. Again, at the town hall, there was quite a bit of, of people talking about transitional housing and bed capacity. So if we could get a, a presentation that identifies areas for transitional housing and to increase our bed capacity, so that way we could go ahead and, and follow Boise v. Martin, especially with the Olympics not too far away. The other thing in the California State Senate right now is SB 4, which is about allowing a streamlined process for housing to be built on religious land. And so if we could identify how many possible properties, I, I think it might be part of our housing element already. So if we could have a presentation on that for 100% affordable housing, I know that's one area. So I definitely want to focus there. Last, last two, for number eight, enhance city image and effectiveness. Again, our website, I don't, I don't know if, if we need to maybe get a webmaster outside of our, our city. You know, sometimes we, we, our staff is busy. Our staff works really hard. And maybe this is something we have to take off of their shoulders so that way we can have a really effective website. And, and the last one, item nine, an accessible community. I, I think one thing that has been important to, to me has been language accessibility. And so that, that's something I've, I've requested in the past. So if, if we could get a costing of what it would be for us as a city to be able to put out major announcements in, in multiple languages. And so that's what I'd like to see. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kontos?
As, as a supplementary request relating to the homelessness matter, there is a concept called Housing First, which entails putting people who are homeless into shelter, into housing, including permanent housing, but without necessarily having any condition, any conditions upfront. If there are any efforts to put together a presentation, I would like to ask that the staff look for organizations that include accountability measures so that way people who are homeless can, can be held accountable as they work on recovery and mental health issues and other things that can help them to, to move their way out of homelessness by, by adding that principle into any housing approach that we would engage in.
Thank you. Councilman Wu?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Just a quick question, okay? And this is the goal for the council to try to do in 2023. And I think, okay, Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai has a lot of suggestion, okay? And even our Councilman, okay, something too. So my question over here, since he has a list of laundry, okay, about he want, but does that have to go through the three vote? Okay, but some, I agree, some might disagree. So what should we do? Well, he said had some good point. So, okay, is that why he say, do we need to vote on his thing? Or should we just, this is a general idea? Okay, and then we go through what this, okay, what we want to do? Okay, then we itemize, okay, one by one? And then in the next meeting, we see how we want to do, how we want to approach? Because a lot of things, a lot of staff time. And maybe we want to spend you guys' time or we disagree to use that time? It depends on by city council to decide. So what we approach on each individual, I might have a list of laundry too, so, but end up, but we all have a lot of thing, maybe you agree or disagree. So should we, how do we approach, approach that?
Through the chair, if I may suggest, just to give context of the, the relationship of this part to the whole, in terms of our budget calendar, we're now underway with preparation of the budget that you'll be considering for the coming fiscal year. So this sets the stage for that. And none of these have price tags identified with them, but they all come at a cost. Take one that I think everybody's universally supported of, which is the body worn cameras. It's moved now from being a good idea to become an essential idea. But it's going to, accepting for the first couple of years, have an ongoing cost implication of, I don't know, quarter million dollars a year. But until we go through an RFP process and until a vendor is recommended and until the council approves a contract, we won't know precisely what that cost is. So your control document, council, will be the budget itself. I think there's probably general support on the council for upping the quotient in terms of public input and transparency and wanting to hear from the, the members of the public about these ideas. But I don't think they would become reality until they become line items in a budget.
So basically, tonight, we just approve a general idea regarding bicycle setting so we can move in, more in detail later on?
Well, yes, sir. But for example, under the, the one about the housing, I think one of the biggest, boldest goals there is we said, "We're going to try and cut it in half in the coming year." I think that's pretty bold. We said, "We're going to try and take the single day homeless count from whatever it is now, 116, to 50." That's, that's not just some little 10% goal. That's a major stride. And if, if there's reticence among the council about any of these goals in any of these categories, it would be very helpful for you to tell us now. Or is there anything on here you don't want us to be working on? That would be very helpful. I don't know that you're asking to decide about all of them tonight. Probably impossible.
So we have to decide? No, right? We don't have to decide?
Well, I, I think through the chair, the, the main thing you're deciding tonight is of these nine goal categories, are these your priorities generally?
Okay.
Are you up for maintaining good intergovernmental relations? Do you want to enhance the city image? And if I may, because we did a pretty extensive town hall type meeting, these reflect the, the people that were in attendance at meeting and did the budget surveys, their priorities. So these aren't the ones that, in the order that they were presented to them, but they, they're coming back to you in they're coming back to you in the public's order. But if you're not in agreement with any one of these, achieve fiscal sustainability or addressing homeless issues or whatever, it would be very helpful for you to tell us now before we get too far into the budget field.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so last, last time when we actually set our goals, we did something similar, but then we did not put it on consent. We, we actually did go through, we went through, so what you did at the town hall, you did at the town hall, and then you presented to us, and then we went through. And then I know Councilwoman Lopez Viado had mentioned about, you know, he, you know, we need some like smart goals, right? We need some specific, measurable, attainable, right, timely. And, and so, you know, I was a little surprised that it was on consent. And so this is why, and I'd gotten some emails from residents who said, hey, can we get some, some specific measurable things to these goals, right? So one thing, if, and I saw you writing notes, I did not obviously delete any goals, right? I just added some specificity to some of the goals, right? And I did, you know, I added about the, the language accessibility, the transitional housing, which I thought Councilman Cantos also made some great points, so I'll just tag along with his. And the webmaster, which was just in addition to what you already had there. So again, you know, because of the process last year, I wanted to make sure, because the residents had that last year, that they also saw it this year. Obviously, you know, we heard Councilman Cantos add some context to it. And, and again, you know, we're asking staff meet all these goals, okay? But there, there isn't any like, well, what does that look like? So I guess from my perspective, I wanted to give some, what does that look like, right? So if we're going to acquire body worn cameras and it's going to come in front of us to approve, then I'm letting you know that a presentation on the policy is, is something that is also going to be necessary, right? If you're talking about continuing with the health department and on the first bullet says with due regard to general fund fiscal impacts, then as a smart, right, specific, measurable, attainable, right, relative, timely goal, then a fiscal cost, right? So that way, these goals, when we, we look at, okay, well, what does this look like here on the dais for the public? Well, these are some of the things the public should expect this year that we will see with these goals. Now, whether we vote, that's, that's all what we want to see. At least I am, I'm sharing with staff, hey, staff, these are some ideas, you know, that we expect to see.
Through the chair, if I may, this is really helpful and I appreciate this conversation. My, my intention is that by the time we finish with the budget and get it in front of you, you will consider it to be the council's budget. It's the most important policy and document you're going to adopt for the operation of the city for the coming year. Not to pick on Councilmember Lopez Viado, but I remember last year, she looked me in the eye at one of these meetings and she said, get more grants. It was really a moment. And, and so we really emphasized that. We worked hard to get the federal grant for AZUSA and the pedestrian safety grants. And, you know, we've, we've yielded some success resulting of her big request at one of these meetings. And I think I've got a sense of the council here, but if you want to see it back for a discussion, we could certainly do that. If you want to have it back on your agenda again. But I, I think I understand where you're coming and I hope you can collectively agree on these.
Well, the way I see this is it's a goal. And, and once we reach certain items that we want to put on the agenda, then at that point is when we'll be able to get additional information. And, and I'm sure our staff will work hard to make sure that we do have some of the items that Mayor Protem has requested. So I would say that this is a general guideline or a general, you know, a goal that we're seeking. So that's why I see it. So want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, move to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Cantos and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz to approve item number two.
Mayor Protem Tabata.
What is this? Pardon me. Have it, have it, have it. But on my vote sheet, I said Tabata. Mayor Protem Tabata to approve city council goals. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabata?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Thank you. Item passes five zero. We had item number three pulled by Councilmember Cantos, which is consideration of an ordinance amending section two dash four zero two of Article eight of chapter two of the West Covina Municipal Code related to campaign finance regulations.
Councilman Cantos, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to say I really am supportive of, of the intention behind this, especially because all of our residents know what, what fellow candidates and I have been through with, with everything that has happened. Concurrently with that, because of my commitment to making sure that we do things in a way that will pass legal muster, I would like to, to, to ask that this matter be referred to consider the, the two possible changes that were recommended by the speakers earlier. That is not to say that it should or shouldn't be done, but I'd like to see if, if the word candidates can be added to the word, right before the word committee within the proposed language. If, if the city attorney can, can do that or, or, or look into that and then, and put that in, I would appreciate it. Just in order to, to clarify, because I do not want us to be in a situation later where there is litigation where we could lose. I, I understand that anyone can sue us for anything, but it's also, at the same time, I, I do think of free speech grounds and I, and I want to make sure that the intent of what we are trying to do doesn't, doesn't end up failing to pass constitutional muster at the same time. And the last time we were here, I asked a lot of extensive questions by the city attorney and the fact that there needed to be further amendment. I just want to make sure we do this properly because I, I join with, with those who have asked for, for this, for this ordinance change with the sentiments. I just want to make sure we do this right. So with that, I'd like to, to move that we, that we add that word or at least, no, actually I'll change it, that we refer back to the city attorney or if the city attorney has any, any thoughts.
Madam Mayor, if I may, so just to be clear, we're not bringing this back because we needed to amend it. We needed to amend it. We're bringing it back because we had inadvertently attached the wrong document. So, but with that said, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Cantos both brought up, and Jim and Jerry brought up good revisions, reasonable revisions for clarification. I would not suggest adding, and we're at first reading, so we can make these changes right here, right now and bring back second reading for you. I would not use the word candidate. Candidate is not defined anywhere in the, in the Political Reform Act, the PRA. The word controlled would go well there. It'd be more clarifying because it is defined in the Political Reform Act and, and we refer to it in our municipal code when, for definitions. Maybe the best revision would be at the very end, and this would be the catchall and it would address your concerns and the citizens' concerns if we, if we add some language. It says that the contribution limit set forth in this section shall not apply to expenditure committees, period. And that would address your concern because it'll be very clear that it would not apply to independent expenditure committees. This is first reading. We can, you can make the motion and approve it with that at the very end, which I suggest, and then bring it back for second reading.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I just wondered, I think this is second reading. It's not the first reading because the first reading was last year when the mayor Dario Casano.
Right. So here, so procedurally, here's what happened. We gave first reading, brought it back for second reading, attached the wrong document on second reading, and the only, the draft that we attached was not the final document. We bring in this back because the only change to that draft last time is in this section.
So this is a second reading of the?
It's, so it's, it's an amendment to an ordinance, so it's first reading of an amendment to the ordinance.
So this is amendment of first?
Yeah, we didn't have, we could, we could have done it in one of two ways. We could have repealed it and brought it all back, but there was just this one.
So we have to do it again next?
Just an amendment, yes, my apologies.
Amendment.
Yeah. And so this is first reading and that does clarify. It addresses the, Mayor Protem brought up a case to my attention. It's a DC case in a district court. It's not binding on us out here, but it is persuasive. And, and with that language at the end of that provision would address any of the concerns.
So we, we already, I'm sorry, so we already have a second reading approved last time, but due to the language issue, so we have to amend it.
Yes.
This amended will be the first reading.
Yes, exactly. Got it. Thank you.
So if that, if?
I believe, um?
Councilman? Councilman Cantos, go ahead.
So with, with that added language at the end, is there, if there isn't, I just want to make sure that we, we don't just sort of draft it right here. Is, is it okay if we were to move to amend it now and then later for you to produce a report that would, that would describe the implications of the added language?
Absolutely, I could do that as well. That's my suggestion for the language to clarify the intent. And I could provide a memo to you before second reading to confirm that.
So in, in that case, in light of that recommendation, I move to approve.
I believe Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Tabata.
Yeah, just to be clear before I, I second. So just, just for public record as well, so the case was speechnow.org versus FSE. And so what you're suggesting, because in the finding there was outside groups could accept unlimited contributions from both individual donors and corporations as long as they don't give directly to candidates. So what, what you're saying that we're going to do would then address this case. So then?
Yeah, and again, that's not binding on us. It does address it. So, so the state defines committees. There's a lot of committees. It's a complex area. There's PACs, there's super PACs, but the committees, so there's controlled, there's sponsored, there's different types, a general, there's different types of committees that are at the behest of the candidate. And that's what we're addressing here. And so that language at the end, that catchall language at the end makes it clear that we're not dealing with independent expenditure committees.
So, right, so.
Can't anyway. We can't anyway. And we also already have preexisting in our ordinance, a section that deals with independent expenditures.
Right. So this, 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 what we're going to be approving goes to any, any committee that, that works with a candidate or a candidate has input into. So if, if a candidate has no input in the committee, then it, the contribution limit does not apply.
Correct. If it's an independent, and we can't regulate, if it's independent expenditure committee, we could not do that before. This just clarifies it more and thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused over here. So last time we talked about this ordinance because we want to follow the Bowen Park, okay, they approve on their, okay, election vote, okay, 76% overwhelmingly, okay, their voter agree that should be restricted for candidate for, I think, $750 and plus the PAC for $750 annually, okay, donation. So that's why we follow through and this is why a lot of city adopt this ordinance, okay, restricted equally, okay, with the PAC. So are we doing the same thing or you?
Yes. No, 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 we're doing the same. And we had, we had done it before, like I had said, and inadvertently attached the wrong document. So it was, it was there before. This further clarifies this section, but there are certain types of committees that the state defines and we, in our municipal code, reference those codes, reference those statutes that define those. So there's controlled, like I said, sponsored, general committees. Those are committees that are created at the behest of a candidate. And with their, if they're completely independent, we don't regulate them.
So, so for example, the PAC of, okay, and the action committee, okay, that kind of political, so we cannot restrict to $650 donation or we can?
If they're not created in conjunction with or at the behest of a candidate.
For, for example?
They're independent, we cannot touch them. We don't regulate them.
For example, if they create an entity, okay, create a PAC under support of one candidate, okay, and then it's an independent expenditures, a PAC, they restrict it $650, okay, annually contribution? Yes or no?
It depends on how that PAC is created.
If they, it's very simple. The PAC from outside agency create a PAC with the candidate's name, okay, let they support this candidate.
Okay, with the permission to use the name at the behest of that candidate, the candidate create that. So it depends on how it's created.
My understanding is, okay, any of PAC can send out the mailer to support candidate even without their permission.
That's an independent expenditure, correct. And we don't regulate independent expenditure.
So meaning, my point is, okay, any of independent PAC, they set up the, okay, committee supporting a candidate, okay, and then send out the mailer and attack, okay, try to, is that restricted $650 spun, okay, donation annually?
Again, if it's created in conjunction with the candidate, then it is restricted, yes.
So even this outside agency create supporting a candidate, even the candidate say, I have no idea with this, this PAC. Can they, or will they be?
They, they're, they're an independent expenditure committee. They can do, they can raise money how they want and spend money how they want. We don't regulate that. The law doesn't allow us to regulate.
You still didn't answer my question is, a one outside agency or, or corporation set out the PAC supporting a candidate without, I say, I don't know, okay, the candidate can say, I don't even know this, okay, and the corporation or agency, but they spend top dollar to support this candidate. Is this, this PAC under his name support da, 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 where is a PAC, would there be restricted for $650 annually donation from each of the donation they receive?
If they're not working in conjunction with the candidate, they will not be restricted.
So meaning, the, basically the candidate say, I don't know this company and this company can put a PAC and will be unlimited money going to the PAC.
Right. But there's many rules on how these PACs are created. The state governs these rules very, very tightly. They have to fill out forms and they're created, they fill out those forms and identifies how they are created. So there's very, there's a lot of limitations.
My understanding, last time we approved in last year with Dario Casano as a mayor and then we have a second reading last time, it's about restricted the PAC $650. And now you say we cannot restrict any PAC?
No, no, that's not, that's not accurate. We can restrict PACs, definitely, that are created at the behest of a candidate or in conjunction with, or generally sponsored.
So only the, these PACs?
A super PAC would not.
Is set up by the candidate, then will be restricted. If they're not set up by candidate, would they be restricted?
Or sponsored or in conjunction. There's, there's definitions on how each of these PACs are created in state statute. And it is, and these PACs know what type of PAC they're going to be, what type of PAC they want to be and how they're going to raise money and how they're going to.
I understand, but I still confused about your answer. That is, okay, outside entity set out the PAC and supporting one candidate and the candidate say, I have no relationship with this PAC, would there be restrictive $650?
It would not then. If they're not working with the candidate at all in any manner, in any way, this is an independent expenditure committee.
I know, but they're under the name of supporting this candidate with his name or her name, would this PAC, since they have a candidate name over there, would they be restricted?
Can I, can I interfere? I know.
Councilwoman Letty.
Thank you. My, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Wu, in reference to, to circumvent the rules, the original rules. So for example, let's say I'm running, of course, I could only take 650 and somebody said, well, I could give you 2,000. And then I'm technically not working with this. I know this committee is supporting me. I can circumvent that instead of donating it to me, donate it to that committee so that they can spend on me, you know, because they're spending anyways in support of me, but I'm not dealing with that committee. So that is what we wanted to make sure that it does, it prevents this. That's why, that 650, that I can only take 650, then this committee who's going against me or for me, support or oppose is, has that same ability too.
Right. But you would not tell them to go to this committee. You would not, they would not be doing anything at your behest. So you don't tell them to do that. They're an independent expenditure committee and they're raising money and spending money how they want. The law says we can't regulate them.
Mayor Protem.
So, so just, just to be clear, so, yeah, so the candidate can? So just to be clear, so, yeah, so the candidate can't say donate $5,000 to this PAC, because then that PAC is not working for me. So I can't even really have knowledge that that's happening. And then I definitely cannot say, hey, funnel all the money over there, right? That would be breaking the law. But in terms of freedom of speech, an independent PAC can support any candidate they want, and we don't have to regulate that, right? Or they can oppose any candidate, right?
We have, in our ordinance, it already pre-existed that we have an independent expenditure community codes that say, here's what you can spend. You got to report to at least X amount of time. You got to, that's already been regulated. And we know we can't, we can't, the law limits us a lot in this area, and that's why we've already had that provision, and we've been following that.
Councilman Wu?
So like Mayor Protem Tabatabai say, okay, I cannot tell him to give $5,000, $10,000, but how can we prove it? Okay, how can we prove he didn't even in to tell him, say, hey, I don't know nothing, but go ahead, set out a PAC and have $10,000, $20,000, even $100,000, okay, with their associate friend or agency, and then set up that PAC and basically just try to unfair, okay, and to run the election compared with, okay, his opponent. I just, we want to make sure the fairness with each of the candidate, okay? And if candidate receives $650, if the PAC want to support any candidate, they entitled to do it, but they should be under the rule of $650 of a donation. That is the purpose only.
And they got to fill out where the money comes and all that, but I don't have an answer to how you police it. The FPSC would police. We could help enforce, but that's a, that's a lot to police.
So basically, today, you saying that we cannot restrict PAC at all?
No, I'm not.
Only the PAC?
I'm not saying that.
No, you're talking a PAC connect with a candidate that is restricted, but any is not restricted with the candidate, we either cannot even prove they have any connection, okay, and they can be unlimited receiving.
Right. So independent expenditure committees, we do not, we do not regulate. We don't do that. And so, that's what I'm saying. We can, this still applies to PACs, definitely.
So basically, okay, I'm still confused.
It's a complex area.
Because you're talking, so, okay, it's this and that, let this and that, so it's so vague. It's not like, so what Baldwin Park approval, a PAC about $600, $750, can we look into their language?
Baldwin Park, I can read their language for you. It's the same, they use the same definition as we do.
Okay.
If you're interested in that.
$750 approves, okay, expenditure. So we just, okay, we want to comply with the law, but at the same time, we want to make sure we don't have any special.
Here's their language. I'll read it for you. Any person or combination of persons formed for the purpose of promoting or opposing the election or reelection of a person to a city elected office, some of it's cut off directly or indirectly, receives contributions or makes independent expenditures, contributions at the behest of the city candidate within the meaning of California Government Code.
There, see?
That's what Baldwin Park says.
Could you see the last sentence, please?
Yes. I have a portion of it.
Everybody not in their head, I have no idea.
At the behest of the city candidate within the meaning of California Government Code 82013. And that's what we have in our municipal code. So we are limiting contributions to PACs as best we can, as far as we can do it.
Okay, so basically, this is the thing, based on your understanding, review everything, this is the best you, we, under the law, that's the best we can do to try to get a fairness for the candidate.
Yes.
So in that way, hopefully, we don't have outside big spender and spending money. It can happen to anybody.
Yeah.
Just saying, it can happen to anybody, not only, it's not necessarily what the last election is about, but because this can happen by any agency or any corporation can set up the PAC, and they just want to support their candidate, okay, and then we just avoid any special interest coming to our city, and that is the purpose.
And we could push it, and we could push it further, stretch it further, we can look at it again. Again, like I think I said before, that our campaign ordinance, it looks like it was piecemealed together.
Okay. So this is just a first reading, and then you would go back and then maybe look into more detail, see if we can make it a little bit more fairness, okay, and then with the restriction. So in that way, we don't have a special interest, not necessarily, okay, who and who, but more important thing is we give everybody a fair chance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So for clarification, then, the first reading would be, well, I mean, I proposed that, accepting the city attorney's recommendation with that last sentence at the end. Would that, Mr. City Manager, would that require a motion to be seconded and approved in order for that to be considered part of the first reading?
Madam Mayor, you can just make the motion and with the language that I suggested, and that's fine for first reading.
Second. So move.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Kontos and a second by Mayor Protem Tabatabai with adding the language that was discussed by the city attorney at this meeting. Prior to roll call, I need to read the title of the ordinance into the record. Ordinance Number 2513, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending section 2-402 of Article 8 of Chapter 2 of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to Campaign Finance Regulations. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to departmental regular matters. City Manager, who will present this report?
Mayor and Council, our acting chief of police, Ken Plunkett, will present this matter. This is council consideration of a resolution approving a CalPERS exception to the 180-day wait period for one of our employees who has graciously offered to return to serve in this capacity. Welcome, Captain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing? Good. Thank you. Well, I'm here tonight to recommend that council adopt the resolution that's before them, making the required certification and approving the appointment of Judy Turner as part-time retired and new public safety dispatcher in accordance with Government Code sections as they apply. Currently, we are experiencing some shortages in our dispatch center, our dispatch center, dispatches, as you know, for both police and fire. The vacancies in there are of very high concern because the limited number of personnel we have in there, we're mandating overtime and extra shifts, and we have four vacancies currently, which is quite a lot. To hire a dispatcher and get them fully trained can take up to close to two years through the whole process. We are actively in the process of trying to hire some dispatchers. We just gave a conditional offer this week, and we're recruiting for the other positions. What this resolution will do will allow us to bring back Judy Turner, who just retired in December after 31 years of service. Judy's one of our most tenured employees we've had. She's a great trainer, and she just has a wealth of knowledge. And bringing her back for the rules of the state that allow it, if the council decides to approve it, it can bring her back before the 180-day requirement, and it'll allow us to shore up those, the vacancies a little bit. It'll allow her to use her tenure to help us train the newly hired people and basically hire her successor behind her and allow us to continue operations in a successful manner for both the police and fire and our dispatch center. So I hope you consider and pass the resolution tonight.
Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado?
I think it's great. Answering those 911 calls takes a great mental toll on anybody. For her being seasoned, she can also train those coming in, but she's already been there, so she knows what to say, how to act, and, you know, the calm, meaning what people need to hear when they're on those 911 phone calls. I'm for this. I mean, I'd love to fill in those spots. I wish we could fill up those spots immediately, but I know that the shortage is everywhere. I feel it at work, too. But I support this, and I would definitely move forward with this and approve it in a heartbeat. So I would motion that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
No, I just want to agree with Councilwoman Lopez Viado, and the sooner we can fill our dispatch, and I think having someone with institutional knowledge and a veteran, especially for really a mentally tough position, so I'll second.
Great. I'm still going to say something, though. 31 years is a lot of knowledge, and I think it'll be a wealth of information and a lot of benefit to us, so I agree.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. I need a second.
Second?
Second by Councilman Kontos. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay. Any reports in the council? Any council requests?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kontos?
I would like to ask, do mother, may I request for the city staff to honor the request of NAACP of San Gabriel Valley Branch President Irma Cooper with regard to the call to action that she raised in her during oral communications?
What do we need to do?
Having to do with the free speech and the analysis of possibilities of California Penal Code sections that she cited.
Okay. Do we have a?
I'll second that. I mean, I'd like to see that move forward because I'm curious, too.
Hearing no opposition, the item passes.
Great. Okay.
If I may, one of the items in our agenda that we seldom need to follow is the mayor council member reports, AB 1234 reports, if you attend a meeting, for example, a meeting of the League of California Cities. This would be your moment to tell us how that went.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Don't want to violate anything.
Councilman Kontos, did you want to say something?
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. I knew I was forgetting something. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Just for the public's awareness, the mayor and I attended the League, California League of Cities Conference locally here in Universal City. We went there and back each day. It was an event where, for newly elected members of city councils across the region as well as newly elected mayors, so we went through training on ethics and protocol and how to work best with city managers, as well as how we should make sure to conduct ourselves with the highest degree of appropriateness and transparency while optimizing engagement with the public. It was intense, intense training for all of those days, and I'm really appreciative for having had the opportunity to go and also to have spent time with the mayor. She is incredibly brilliant and just the ways that she, I saw her interact with other leaders from across the region. They were just really enamored by her, and as am I. She's just really a wonderful person, and I'm really appreciative for our having been able to attend and for us to be able to be better servants to all of you. So that is essentially my report.
I have to agree. That was a great conference, and it was long, but very, very intense, but it was, we met a lot of nice people, we learned a lot, and yes, it's a way how we are going to be able to deal with our city managers and staff and council, fellow council members, and I really enjoyed it, and thank you. Thank you for allowing me to attend. Councilman Wu?
I think you represent city well, okay, and excellent job. Sorry, you still don't have a NEM tag. Yeah, okay, you don't have the mayor's NEM tag, okay, so you can show people you're the West Covina mayor. But just quickly, I want to say, in 2016, when I just got elected, okay, and I went with Lori Johnson, okay, to Sacramento, and we went through a three-day, two-night, and it's an excellent, okay, trip to Sacramento to visit, okay, the Capitol. At the same time, met a lot of people, and I think the training is really worth it, okay? I think this is something, it's a newly elected and a mayor, and regarding all this networking and plus education, really worth the time, and I really learned a lot. That's why I'm still here seven years. So because the training I have, I learned all this knowledge, so hopefully, again, it will give you the same impact. But good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Just like to say, I'm a little jealous. I went all the way to my dining room and zoomed for three days. The coffee was good, though. The coffee was good. Met some great people, my two little doggies. But yes, no, it's very important, and I'm happy, Councilman Kontos, I'm happy that you got to experience that. Mayor, I'm happy that you were able to connect with other people and really show what West Covina is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado?
Three days, I don't envy you, but that is, it's a lot of information, good information, especially when you come into the council. I just wanted to just remind everybody that I hope to see everyone next week on, you know, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the three-day, oh, yeah, we have Thursday, technically Thursday to Sunday. If you haven't got your carnival tickets, get it before the prices go up, so you all-day ride. It'll be a fun event, you know, support our local vendors there as well, bring family, friends, bring people from outside of West Covina in here, and enjoy the food, entertainment, and just galore of fun. So we hope to see everyone there, and yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, with that said, I think we, this meeting is adjourned.